Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Rickett?
Here.
Ms. Harrington?
Here.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
All right, do I have any adjustments to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Dawson, may I have closed session motion please?
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees; Discussion of Pupil Personnel as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A2 for early admission, waiver of compulsory attendance, out-of-county, out-of-district request, and student discipline; Discussion or consideration of reports or plans related to the security of a school division facilities or the safety of persons using school division facilities as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A19 of the Code of Virginia.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session.
May we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Byron, roll call please.
Ms. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Dawson.
Aye.
Ms. Harrington.
Aye.
Mr. Rickett.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies that the vote as follows, four yes votes, no no votes, the resolution is approved by a four to zero vote.
Dr. Horneck, deposition of personnel actions.
Yes ma'am, recommend approval of both the personnel as well as the pupil scenarios presented in closed session.
I move to approve the personnel agenda to include resignation, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and rescind employment and extracurricular and coaching appointments. Do we need to do each one of these separately, or should I read them all?
Do them separately, that's the first one.
That's the first one.
All right, may I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Four votes, no no votes. Deposition of people personnel actions, Dr. Horneck?
Yes ma'am, recommend approval of the people personnel oh one, oh two, and oh three.
I move to approve the request for waiver of compulsory attendance under the religious exemption for people personnel case PP two twenty twenty five dash oh one, PP twenty twenty five dash oh two, and PP twenty twenty five dash oh three.
May I have a second?
I second that.
All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Four yes votes, no no votes. And then certification of the annual review of the school division crisis plan, do we have a certification please?
I move to certify that the school crisis, emergency management, and medical response plans for each school and the school division have all been reviewed for the twenty twenty five, twenty six school year.
Is this a roll call Laura, or is this?
It doesn't need to be, but it can be.
All right, all those in favor by saying aye.
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need a second.
Second.
Rushing along, I'm sorry. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Four yes votes, no no votes. And then moving on, correct? Is it the strategic plan?
Do you want to recess until six thirty?
Oh yes, we have to say the pledge, sorry.
Recession till six thirty?
I will call recess till six thirty.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just ready to roll right in.
Whoa, I'm right on edge.
My piece of candy now.
I like it.
Sorry.
May we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Recognitions and announcements. Dr. Hornick.
Yes ma'am, thank you very much. We are honored this evening to have Delegate Scott here with us in Orange. And Delegate, we would like to invite you to the podium and for a special presentation. I know we have a number of our wrestlers as well as our wrestling coaches in attendance. Delegate, we will turn it over to you again. Thank you for being here.
Look at that, I get extra help turning the microphone on. Thank you, members of the school board, for allowing me to be here and present this resolution that was passed through the House of Delegates, April 2nd of this year. And I'll just read it real quick. Whereas the Orange County High School Wrestling Program had three wrestlers, Justin Jones, Dominic Turner, and Sophia Slaughter, win Virginia High School League Class 4 Individual State Championships in 2025. And whereas the Orange County High School Wrestling Programs, Justin Jones, Dominic Turner, and Sophia Slaughter, won their titles in the 126-pound weight class, 190-pound weight class, and the 132-pound weight class respectively. And whereas, in addition to its state champions, the Orange County High School Wrestling Program saw notable performances from Waylon Rogers, who won the Virginia High School League Region 4D Title and the 113-pound weight class and placed third in the state championships. And Caitlin Turner, who placed fifth in the 100-pound weight class at the state championships. And whereas his championship title, Justin Jones, achieved the rare and distinguished feat of becoming a three-time wrestling state champion. And whereas, the accomplishments of the Orange County High School Wrestling Program are the result of the hard work and dedication of the student athletes, the leadership and guidance of their coaches and teachers, and the unwavering support of their families and the entire Orange County High School community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates, that the Orange County High School Wrestling Program hereby be commended for having three wrestlers win 2025 Virginia High School League Class 4 Individual State Championships. And be it resolved further that the clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the Orange County High School Wrestling Program as an expression of the House of Delegates admiration for the program's achievements. And if any member of the wrestling program would like to come up and receive the resolution?
Coaches, come on up.
Come on up, everyone. Yes.
And then Coach Seal, we'd love to get you guys over here in front of the backdrop and get a few pictures as well.
That'd be great. That'd be very good.
Anybody else want to join?
Our chair will stand in.
I know, so say, can we, you two of you get back up there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, very proud of you.
Brian and everybody on your team, just want to thank you guys. What you all have done with the wrestling program. And I will tell you, that's funneling down and we're seeing great, not only participation, but great success at both the middle schools, funneling to you all. And it's really a testament to the culture that you all have built in this program. It is easily one of our top, probably the top athletic program we have right now as far as participation, performance, success, culture. Thank you guys for what you do. Athletics unlocks doors for students. It keeps, it gives students a reason to believe. It gives them a reason coming to school. It is a massively important part of what we do. And what you all do now, year-round, minus a couple weeks of dead period in the VHSL, now what you do year-round makes a tremendous impact. And Delegate Scott recognizing you all shows that you have put yourself across the Commonwealth as just championship caliber. And so, on behalf of everybody here, thank you all for what you do for students and congratulations on the continued success. This hasn't been a one-time. You've had tremendous success now for years. And of particular importance, I'm really, really impressed with the girls' wrestling program and the students that you have, the student athletes that you have coming out. That's a massively growing sport. I know it's now evolved from an emerging sport, from the VHSL, to now a full-fledged sport. And we are ready to, we're ready to see more championships there. So thank you all. I don't know if anybody else had anything to add, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't thank you for what you do.
I'm just going to add one little quick thing, Brian's smiling. One little quick thing, as individuals, I would like to thank you. You know, I know all of you, you all have families, you know. The amount of time and dedication to build the culture and the successful program that you've done requires dedication, and that means time away from your own family. So, thank you. I think it just needed to be said out loud. You know, wives, spouses, and so forth need to hear it as well. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Hornick, do you have any others?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Move on to public comment. Ms. Byron, do we have any speakers?
Yes ma'am, we have a addition to the speaker list, Stephen Irving.
I'm going to read something first, so your time won't start just yet. The Orange County School Board recognizes the importance of maintaining a respectful and orderly environment during school board meetings. Therefore, we kindly request that all comments made are relevant to the field of pre-K through 12 public education and pertain to the matters concerning the school board and division. We ask that individuals refrain from using offensive language, engaging in vulgar or profane behavior, or making comments or taking action that might incite violence or disrupt the peace. Unless authorized by the chair, each speaker is allotted a maximum of three minutes to express their views. To uphold decorum, we also kindly request that applause, noise-making, or any other disturbing behavior, disruptive behavior be avoided before, during, and after a member of the public addresses the board. It is important to note that the public comment is intended for addressing the school board and therefore, comments should be made, should be directly solely directed solely towards the board members. Furthermore, it is expected that the board members will refrain from engaging in dialogue with the speakers during this time, as it is an opportunity for the board to actively listen to the thoughts, concerns, and feedback of the public. Any conduct that violates the established decorum and order as determined by the chair or their designee may result in disciplinary actions, including potential expulsion from the meeting. Alternatively, written comments may be submitted to the board members via email. It is crucial to emphasize that these guidelines are not intended to restrict freedom of speech, but rather to ensure effective communication between the public and their public servants. We eagerly anticipate your valuable contribution and feedback. Thank you.
Am I good?
You're good. Thank you.
So, I have a topic that I spoke about last year. It's about my watch and what I do with it during the school day. So, I have a thing set up on my watch that is, makes it locked down to only where a certain amount of people can only contact me during the day, and that is only receiving or receiving phone calls just in case of like, an immediate emergency that I need to contact them right then and there. But other than that, the only like, four or five contacts that I have put on that list can only contact me during, I think it is 7:25 to about 2:50. So, from that time period, only those set people can contact me during that time. And it makes it so, everything is locked down, everything is following standard. And I just try to make sure that I'm following like, the law and then not breaking it as well. I just want to make sure that my watch is just for fitness and making sure that I can see time during the day. And only during an emergency would I text my parents or would they text me. So, I can show y'all, if y'all want, how I lock it down. I lock it down. It is on a do not disturb. I have just a second to find it. So, I go into my focus settings and I go into do not disturb. And on my list, I have my aunt, I have my dad, I have my grandma, I have my mom, and I have my other grandparents that live in Barbersville. I have it only to allow notifications from that set people, only allow calls from the people on that list, and it doesn't allow repeated calls. It will let me know when it is active because it changes the watch screen on my thing and it changes the screen on my phone. It is from 7:00 AM to 2:40, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Byron, do we have any other speakers?
No ma'am.
All right. If that's the case, I will say the public comment is closed. Moving on, consent agenda. Approval of minutes, financial reports, and monthly operating bills. Do we have any questions or concerns?
I reviewed them. I didn't have anything.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from the May 1st and May 5th, 2025 meetings, the July 2025 financial report, the monthly school nutrition fund report, and the July 2025 operating bills.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. No-no votes. All right, moving on to action items. We have overnight field trip request. Dr. Hornick?
Yes ma'am, we have two, and I believe both are coming from DECA, if I remember correctly. Maybe it's just one tonight. There we go. Thank you very much. And yes, so one, as you can see, is to the Crystal Gateway Marriott in Arlington. This is November 21st through the 23rd, which is around the Thanksgiving time. And then we have the DECA Club heading to the State Leadership Conference, which they do yearly. That is held in Virginia Beach. And that is actually kind of the mid-semester in the spring. So, I'd like to give kudos to our DECA teachers for being well ahead of the game and getting these requests in far in advance, so they can begin their preparation and their planning. But we would appreciate the board's support for DECA.
Any questions? A motion?
A motion to approve as requested.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Four yes votes, no-no votes. Motion carries. Just in time. Congratulations. Good luck. Do you want to, do you have anything you'd like to add to? We already proved you, so you're good. Would you like to?
Yeah.
Get us excited about it?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry I'm late, and I was grading papers already. So, I don't have a window in my room anymore, so I get lost on what time it is. We're excited, we're geared up. We got new classrooms. The kids are excited about that. And next week, we'll have OC block. So, we're gearing up for recruitment, for DECA. We're trying to get the students excited, if not to join DECA, to join something, to be involved in sports, another CTSO, or another organization in the school because studies shows that if they're involved, they do better in school. So, we hope that these field trips will be some enticement for people to join, and we're looking forward to another great year. Thank you.
Good luck. Look forward to hearing back from you in the spring.
Or December.
Or December, yeah.
That'd be even better.
All right.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi. Just wanted to ask, I was really interested in the DECA Power Trip. And I don't know if there's any opportunity for other interested participants to come and watch our students do a great job? Or if not, if we can at least maybe get a video or something of the competition that occurs? I thought that was a really, really cool one, and if I couldn't go be part of the whole thing, I would love to have a little bit more information and see how great we do.
Well, we're always, we're required to bring our own judges for districts and states. We've had at least one person that was an alumni join us at Nationals one year. So, if you ever want to go or come see us, just let us know. You can just come observe. It's hard to observe an actual competition because it's just a student and that one judge.
Okay.
But I think you get more like if you judge. When we go to state and power trip, I think that's a great opportunity for anyone to come, like administration or school board or superintendent, to come and like, see what it takes for our students to get ready.
Yeah.
I think that's opened the eyes of some administrators that went with us in prior years, including last year, Mr. Patrick Fagan went with us, and he was like, this is what y'all do? And I was like, yes. It is difficult. And so, I think it changes like, your perspective and what our students are going to take for doing. So, districts is December 10th.
Okay, I'm very interested. I will be in touch with you. Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to proposed policy revisions. We have multiple ones to go through. Do we want to do them, do them one at a time? And if there's no changes, then we'll just move on to the next one? Approve and move on? Does that sound okay with everyone? All right, the first one is EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan. Anybody have any questions or revisions that they would like to add to that one? No? We're good? All right, moving, we'll go ahead. Can I have a motion to approve?
Do you want to do each one individually?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to approve as presented.
Do I have a second? All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries for yes votes, no-no votes. Moving on, EBVA, Emergency First Aid CPR and AED certified personnel. Any questions or revisions to that one? If none, may I have a motion?
I had one, it's just an editorial. I think that on the very last line, "had" should probably be "has." In each school, at least one employee has been trained, has the means to access naloxone.
Okay.
Other than that. If you click this thing right here, it collapses it.
We have a motion to approve with the edits.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
All yes, four yes votes, no-no votes. EBC, Extreme Heat Safety and Protection. Sorry, I should have brought my glasses. Any changes or revisions? If none, can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Four yes votes, no-no votes on the EBBC. Next one, EBCB, Safety Drills. Again, any changes or revisions? Nope?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes votes, no-no votes. GAB, Acceptable Computer Use, Computer System Use.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Four yes votes, no-no votes. GCL, Professional Staff Development.
I had one question on the second page, paragraph that's in red. There's one that says additionally, any non-training academic activity? And that's the reverse of what it is every other place, non-academic training activity. I think it's the correct wording. Second sentence from the bottom. In the red paragraph. Additionally, any non-training academic activity is how it reads currently.
Rather than non-academic training activities.
Shouldn't it be non-academic training activity? That's the only thing I found in that one.
We will correct.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve as edited.
Second with the.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Four yes votes, no-no votes. IGAE. Again, I had some issues with this originally.
I couldn't get the link to open when I was reviewing. So, I haven't actually read it.
Yeah, I had an issue with it not opening as well.
It's just the addition of the opioid overdose prevention.
Correct.
Do you want to?
I think it's, that looks good.
No changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Three yes votes, one no vote. We skip over the, yes, may.
I missed who moved and who seconded.
I moved.
Sandy seconded.
And then it was.
Three yes, one no.
Thank you.
No, you're fine. And then the IKAC, we went through the last meeting and it was approved. J CJ, Classroom Assignment for Twins. Any adjustments or changes to that one? Nope. If none, can I have a motion?
May I ask, Dr. Hornick, I know that you said that this was a policy, we already had it in place, and it was kind of difficult to understand. What's your recommendation on this?
Move to approve. Judy can catch you on more. It's what we already do. It's just interesting that kind of, the way it's worded seemingly, makes it seem like you're going to bypass the principle and pretty much come almost like directly to Judy, but we will work in tandem. So, it's, it was just wonky how it came through in legislation. But it is, it is not a problem, and it's how we handle classroom assignments currently. So, it will not require a change for us.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Motion to approve, please.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Four yes votes, no-no votes. J H C D, Administering Medicines to Students. Any changes? Do I have this one?
I did have one, I don't know, I guess it's a comment. And I can't find it right now, but there's one of the bullets that says, if students are bringing over the counter medication to school on their own, that it has to be in the original bottle with the instructions written on it. But then in another bullet, it says they're only allowed to have one day's supply. So, if I have a bottle of Aleve at home, I'm taking all the other Aleves out and bringing two in that bottle? Just seems odd. I mean, I understand why, but.
If you bring, if you borrow the bottle, so there are some situations where a parent may want to bring, you know, say some ibuprofen and leave it in the nurse's office? And in that instance, that's when it needs to be in the bottle. But students can then bring one dose with them.
Outside of the bottle and a plastic bag.
So, it's not the student who has to carry the original bottle? Okay. It didn't read that way to me, but thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions or changes? Nope, we're good. May I have a motion?
I move to approve.
May I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Four yes votes, no-no votes. J H C E, Notification of School Connected Overdose. This one's new, I'm assuming?
Yes ma'am. So, essentially. Yes ma'am. So essentially, have some things that happened across the Commonwealth. This, um, this originally came out as guidance from essentially the governor. And last year, now it's been codified this year.
So the one question that I had, um, and maybe I'm just reading it strangely, but the parent notification, when you first start reading it, to me, it sounds like that we will notify the parent, not all parents. Does that make sense? Yeah, I was, that was confusing me. I mean, I, I think after I read it through a couple of times, I understood it meant, this is how we're going to be notifying if it happens in the school?
Correct.
This isn't notification to the parent of the person that it's actually happening to?
That's correct, yes. And so, yeah, obviously we'll be working with, you know, hopefully this never happens. Let's, let's say that, number one. Number two, this is for, uh, the requirement is for us to provide an outreach to all parents and guardians, should this situation arise at one of the schools or as you can read essentially at, at any school-sponsored activities as well, or any, anywhere essentially where our code of conduct would be enforced and there's a nexus to the school. You, you have, it's, the breadth of this policy covers that same swath. And so it's not necessarily, if it just happens at Orange County School X, but if it's at, you know, a different high school out of county, but our, our team is playing and you have a student in the crowd and something like that's, it's still a school-sponsored activity and we're still responsible. This is essentially our second year working under this arrangement. It was done the first year via pretty much an executive order. I don't know if officially came out as that, or if it was guidance, how it came out, I can't remember. And so now it's been passed into legislation, so, but what's written here is exactly what we have, which exactly is the guidance that we have had now for the last two years.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Four yes votes, no no votes? And then we have the J H H Suicide Prevention. I did have one question on this one. I didn't quite understand why at the last, why the last paragraph is in there, and I'm assuming this is what it was before, because it's not in red, but "Parents have the right to review any audio, visual materials that contain graphic, sexual, or violent content used in any anti-bullying or suicide prevention program." I mean, I'm assuming that's because it's Suicide Prevention Program. Never mind, I think I answered my own question.
Sometimes it helps to just say it out loud, right?
Yeah, yes, okay.
I did have one question on this one too. In paragraph one, the sixth line down, it says, "After the potential risk is reported to the school counselor or psychologist, an assessment is conducting, conducted following the risk screening protocol. Then the parent is notified." So we conduct the assessment prior to parents being told?
Susan, do you want to clarify?
Just on the immediacy and the risk that is posed at the time, a lot of times that happens kind of in tandem. We do have a responsibility to conduct the assessment, but we also have a responsibility to let parents know. And so a lot of times that happens kind of at the same time. It sometimes does happen right before, but it really just depends on each individual's situation and how, you know, big the emergency is. And how big their risk.
Yep, go ahead.
How do we inform parents what to be concerned about before it comes to this point? How, is there training or, you know, something, documentation for them to just like know what the signs are to watch for their own child?
We do have information on our website, um, provided through the Cook Center, which, and they provide free resources. So there are things on our website under parent information where parents could go and, and find out information.
Okay.
And have access to those resources.
Great, thank you very much. Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Uh, JJ AD?
Stop for just one second, I'm sorry. Susan, what is the mechanism that allows us to do that without calling up the parent first? Do we have some type of, just because the student's enrolled in our public school facility, that we have the right to provide intervention to them?
So you're talking about like the assessment?
Yes.
So the assessment actually just identifies the risk and identifies what the student needs? It doesn't actually provide, like it's not counseling in that moment?
Okay.
It's an assessment to say what, how, how big is the risk? What are we looking at and what services do we need to provide or have available for that student? And before we would get to that point, we have parents involved.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And regardless of the results of that assessment, parents would be notified?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
And we use an assessment that is a standard assessment in the mental health community, so.
Makes me feel better, thank you.
We approved them, right?
We did.
Okay.
And then we asked questions.
Sorry.
That's all right. Uh, the JJ AD, Student-Athlete Sudden Cardiac Arrest Policy. Is there any, this is also a new policy as well? Is there any questions on that one? Or edits?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
I do have a question. Is this language just directly out of legislature or is this?
Yes ma'am.
Second the, uh, motion.
All of these policies are language directly out of?
That's not true.
There's no edits, there's no adjustments?
Only thing that we end up doing or what the administration is doing is if it needs to be specialized to Orange County, then they go through and do it. But basically the law is the law.
So the ones that we are, within this list are just? Dr. Hornick?
There are some that are new legislation.
Yeah, it's, it's a mixture of both.
Which is law.
So for instance, in IGAE, the stuff about opioid overdoses, I mean, that's how it's written in the law, I mean, everything that was in there. The AI one is not, we, we worked on that in-house with MICA. DLC dash R, the travel regulations that we'll bring forward, that, that's one that we have had and we're looking to update the thresholds. So it's a mixture of both, but the, for the student athlete sudden cardiac arrest, this, this is new legislation that came out that all schools in the Commonwealth are to have a plan for this, and this language is pretty much exactly what you would see in the code.
So when you look at KBA, Request for Public Records, content, is I looking at the right one? Oh, at, or let's look at the one before, JRCA, and when you look, content's added several definitions and updated information, is that done at legislature or is that done by us and then brought to the board for approval?
Could be either.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thanks, Jac.
Boy, you guys are really confusing me. We approved that one, right? Ms. Byron, thank you. All right, moving on, JRCA, School Service Providers' Use of Student Personal Information. This one seems to be pretty extensive, and I was wondering, could we get either, uh, sit down with MICA or some type of consultation with him to kind of go over to make sure that we are, we are and how we are in compliance with COPA, FERPA, et cetera?
Uh, we have done that, um, he's actually certified that we are. Yes ma'am? But we can, I can certainly set that up, but he has looked at that from the FERPA and the COPA lens, as well as the Child Internet Protection Act.
I would like to delay this one, if that's okay? I would like to just get some questions answered.
As long as it does not put the administration behind. Dr. Hornick?
I'm just, I'm looking at the code right now, I want, I want to say, could you bring up the code there, Laura? So, to, to your point, Mr. Rick and Ms. Harrington, so when you look at, if you can toggle back and forth real quick, so you can see that one of the things that was added here, as you go to the top, was the, the stuff about the school-issued device. So I mean, it's, I mean, literally a copy of what's in Virginia Code, School Technology Provider. Means, so up in those definitions. And so that's where some of these are directly from code, like you were saying, and others are, you know, have been provided via lawyers.
In the past, sometimes I believe that we've had different colors for those things that were both, you know, like legislature, policy, law, whatever, and maybe board members had made a suggestion or something. And I'm not seeing any difference in color, so I'm assuming these are all based on what.
Right, I mean, if we, if we continue required contract terms, if you can go back, so you can see, you know, go back to the code and you just scroll down. You know, so, uh, scroll back up, go back and go where number one is, B1. Okay, so, and so if you, if you toggle back and forth, you'll see the information that was here and how it was changed. I mean, this was, you know.
So it's just code that was updated and we're adding the updates?
Correct.
Um, there is one spot, Laura, on the, if you go back to ours, the fifth paragraph down, the new one in red, last sentence, "School-issued device includes any laptop, table, or other," I think it should be tablet.
Tablet.
Oh. Tablet.
That's an easy fix.
That's one of our new devices.
Tables. We're issuing tables this year.
It's on the table, not on the floor.
That's right.
So what are we trying to do to, to achieve by delaying it? If it's embedded by our attorney?
If you would like to go ahead and approve it, I'm just going to vote no. I would like to clarify and get some answers from MICA, that's all, so.
Does this, and this does not create any timing issues relative to implementation?
No ma'am, we can, we can, happy to get Mike on board, that's not a problem.
Okay, and I would definitely support the chair's request.
Well, I don't think we need to do MICA with everyone, it's just Ms. Anderson. She has the specific questions. Correct? You can just get that?
Yes.
Yeah.
However, the board would prefer to do that, that's not a problem.
I, I will say that I had some pretty serious questions from a constituent about digital privacy, student information, PPI, um, are we following the law? FERPA, COPA, you know, the whole nine yards. And I've been back and forth with MICA and Dr. Hornick multiple times, and MICA's provided some, what seems to me to be pretty foolproof, that we are in compliance with the law. And I don't know what else we can do.
To the best of their ability. It seems like that, you know, the team, I see you over there, the team has put some, you know, pieces and some things in place to protect our young people here in Orange County to the best of their ability while other divisions have had access. We have not. So continue the great work.
Yeah, and I had a chance to talk with, with Mr. Bennett and Ms. Knight about the extensive work they've put into vetting every single app and every single, you know, technological thing that we use to make sure that we are protecting students and families and their data.
And the multiple layers of security that they have put in place is impressive.
And I asked Brandon, you know, can we, can we ever be 100% sure?
Nope.
No, nobody can in this world. There is no 100% surety. So all we can do is the best that we can do, I think. I mean, that we're in the digital, the whole AI thing that we're going to be talking about, that horse is out of the barn.
Yep.
It's, we're going to have to learn how to navigate it carefully. But it, it ain't going back into barn. So excuse my English.
Dr. Hornick, may I ask a question relative to the process that we're going through? I, I believe previously we would get the download, and then I remember there was like a column where that information would be sent to each of your executive directors and stuff to just review it before it was then brought to us. Did that same thing occur in this process?
Yes ma'am.
So they feel comfortable, there's nothing that has been left out inadvertently that came to their attention at least?
Correct, and I think with respect to this one, it may be that we're talking about the same thing in two different ways. The policy itself is solid because it's literally a copy of Virginia Code, right? So passing the policy doesn't necessarily mean we can't continue to do the work with MICA, because that's, that's more of the procedural, how we're doing it. You know, there, there isn't anything he's going to tell us about the policy. He's going to say, Virginia Code says this, you, you literally copy and paste it, right? As far as continuing to go and make sure that we are in compliance with all the things that come up, that becomes more regulatory, more procedural underneath the policy. So again, I'm happy to do anything to, to make sure that the board feels comfortable with where we stand. But I think as far as just what's written in this policy, you know, it's, you can, when you toggle back and forth, you'll see it's, it's a copy of, you know, it's a copy and paste of what's in Virginia Code.
Thank you.
On this one, I turned my page and realized I had another question, but it's really just an editorial thing. The, under required contract terms on that same one, I read that first paragraph probably five times and went, huh? Every time. It, it's just very clumsy, in my opinion. And I'm wondering if we can, in every instance, change where it says, "School Service Provider or School Technology Provider." Could we just simplify it to School Service or Technology Provider? It reads easier. And, and I understand that they're differentiating between a provider outside of the school division and then the school or the school board ourselves. But it just reads really weird. So I'd like to, am I the only one who reads that and thinks, what in the world did that just say?
Yeah, it is weird.
I should have come with an edit prepared, but I didn't. I guess we can just leave it.
If it's, it's the law.
It feels wordy to me.
It's the legal.
It's the code?
Yeah.
Well, that explains it then, right?
Yes ma'am.
That is up to you all if you would like to move forward on that one.
Personally, I would like to make sure that everyone in this board feels comfortable with it to the extent that we're able to. Unless there's a problem with delaying it and bringing it back, I agree that we should delay it for further clarification.
I appreciate that, thank you. Moving on to KBA, Request for Public Records. Any questions or revisions on that one?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Four yes votes, no no votes?
I didn't vote, but I'm an aye, sorry.
Sorry, I was just in the routine, my apologies. Four yes votes, no no votes. KBE. KBE, KBA-dash-E rights and responsibilities under FOIA, any adjustments or questions on that one? If not, motion?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Four yes votes, no no votes? Last one above the line is KO, commercial, promotional, and corporate sponsorships. Any questions or edits?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Four yes votes, no vote, no votes? And then down below, we have navigating AI and OCPS presentation. IIBF, use of generative, artificial intelligence and educational settings.
Did we skip one? Do we do travel?
Yeah, okay, yes, yes, ma'am. For DLC-dash-R, we took a look back and we need to update, we need to increase our per diem a little bit. And so our folks in finance worked to make sure that it was in line with, kinda like, the industry standard. So the change is reflected in the per diem.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Four yes votes, no no votes?
And we got rid of telegrams, I don't think we're sending those anymore. That's how we're gonna send parent notifications from now on, a telegram.
Speak for yourself, I still like it.
A singing telegram, alright. And yes, so now on to AI, thank you.
The presentation is what we were presenting thus.
Yes, ma'am, so the, the presentation is the one that Dr. Brookings was here for.
Yep.
And our goal was to create a, a policy that is flexible enough to adapt and essentially let our folks know that where the rubber hits the road is in the regulation, and that way is, because we know we're gonna have to update this frequently, and I think we wrote in here that this, we need to do this, and I think we put yearly, correct, Brandon? We have this, checking this yearly for making sure that it's still up to date. And so we feel really comfortable to answer the question, yet MICA has looked at both of these and provided some suggestions, and he thinks that we are where we should be, given the current state of where AI is in development, knowing that it's likely we're gonna have to continue to adjust. And hopefully, in that case, we're only looking at the regulatory side, because we believe we have written the policy side flexible enough to adapt, so we're not constantly changing policy. And we're happy to answer any other additional questions.
Dr. Hornick, is the IIBF policy, is that the same that we've been discussing, that that was developed by the state legislator, and this is their language?
Uh, no, ma'am, this, we, we used model guidance from other divisions, we used model guidance from MICA to try to figure out the best way to, really, our goal with the policy was to acknowledge the benefits, to acknowledge the, the downsides and the potential pitfalls of AI. To let folks know that our goal is to utilize it appropriately and to teach students how to utilize it appropriately. Make sure that our teaching staff knows how to do it appropriately and in line with the division goals. And then essentially to say, the banks and the river are established in our, our guide and our regulatory process, and then spent, the vast majority of the time was on the guide and the regulatory side, actually spelling out steps and ways that we can kinda put parameters around it. A lot of it was done as far as our work within, you're talking about the cohort that we were involved in. So many of the ideas and things that we wrote came from that work and working collaboratively with those folks, but it wasn't written by
Okay.
the group. It was, it was a kind of a mixture of all the information and details that we were taking in through that process.
Thank you, that's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm I was thinking that.
Yes, yes, that's correct, yes, we did the, the, through the VDOE and through, through VAST, the VDOE funded kind of a generative AI year of learning, and we were one of the divisions that participated. And so the vast majority of this work, the guide, which is where the, most of the work came in, and the regulatory side was pretty much all built during those sessions that we attended.
So the model policy that just came out from VDOE reflects this?
Yes, so we looked through the model policy, and we believe that all of the major themes that are in that are hit within, either in the regulatory or in the policy side. And we are hopeful that we can get this policy and regulation passed, because we are, the next step we'd like to take is go to our acceptable use. And re-take a look at that, there are some things that we feel we might need to take out that are kind of outdated, similar to telegram, you know, that type of thing, it's not that bad. But we would like to get this on board, so that way we have the banks and the river established for all of our folks. And then we think the, the next step would be to look at our acceptable computer use agreement, both on the staff and the student side. So in the G section of our policy, as well as the I section, and recommend some updates to the board for that, and include some AI language in there as well, utilizing some of the, you know, the model policy that came out as well. But we feel really comfortable with, with where we stand, and that this will give us a leg to stand on, it establishes parameters, knowing full well that we're gonna have to continue to be continually reevaluating.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Terrific job, you know, Susan, Renee, Judy, Brandon, great job. Continue to put it, you know, push the envelope. You guys always, you know, like to be at the front of the class and lead the way and not wait for the state. You know, I think that's what Dr. Hornick and all of us really love about you guys. So continue to push that, because we are absolutely in uncharted territory. We have no idea. And the fact that you put a, you know, yearly review is, for sure. So thanks again for protecting, this is the, this is the area I'm probably the most concerned about.
Me too, it's terrifying.
Some of the other things that we're talking about, I mean, it's concerning, but this is the area, we just don't know what we don't know, so anyway.
And it's at the speed of light, yeah.
Yeah, yesterday. Did we have a board member on that cohort group? Was that you? Okay, I couldn't remember when I read that. So, thank you.
You too. Any other questions?
The work was done by the cohort.
Move to approve?
Both?
Sure.
Uh, what, could we not, the other one yet, because I have a question?
Okay, no, that's fine.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Four yes votes, no no votes, and then IIBF-dash-R on the regulations.
Right, so... My apologies, I have it written down, but I'm not seeing it now. It was under the avoiding misrepresentation and plagiarism section. And why am I not finding it? Oh, okay. So my question is, the very last sentence says, of that section, says, "Students must also clearly distinguish between their work and AI-generated contributions." So in, in, you know, traditional writing, you use the APA or the MLA for citations of things. Is, is part of what our teachers will be taught to have some sort of model like that, that students will reference? This was a, you know, an AI-generated? And that's getting in the nitty-gritty, but I'm just wondering about, is there a?
Renee, did you want?
Or is that already?
I do think that that's something that we are going to work with our teachers, they will have a model.
Okay, and then there was one other one, under curriculum relevance. The fourth line, and this is just a simple edit too, with refining drafts. Generative AI technologies support students throughout the creative and research process hyphen, helping to generate ideas, conduct research, or refine drafts hyphen. I think we need it, however, the ultimate responsibility for creating original work rests with the students.
Add however. No problem.
That would be my preference.
We will take care of it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright, four yes votes, no no votes? Okay. Moving on, superintendent's reports, Dr. Hornick?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Briefly, I'd like to touch base on capital improvement, of course, the, the large one that we have been working on is for our CTE facility. And just wanted to be really clear about where we stand. And so Laura got on a program and was able to capture a timeline of where we stand with the CTE facility. And to make a long story short, we have an RFP that was sent out, and we have proposals that have come back. Currently, members of the administration, as well as members of our CIP committee, inclusive of two board members, are evaluating the proposals from the six architect firms. In addition, we have members of, of the board that are interested in, in pursuing a little bit further the, the potential option of the PPEA financing option that is available, and whether or not we would like to pursue that opportunity as a funding mechanism. And so that is where we currently stand. And so we are not only evaluating our architect proposals and analyzing those, but also in some pretty deep consideration as to whether or not PPEA is the appropriate vehicle and mechanism through which to finance the project. But we do have this image, this timeline on our website. And as we move through the stages, this will be a living document, and we will continue to add points on the timeline. We just thought it was very important that our community know where we stand and what we are doing. And that our goal remains, we would really like to have this facility open in the fall of 2027 to start serving our students across, across Orange County High School. I don't know if Ms. Anderson or Mr. Ricken, if you had anything else you wanted to add there?
Yeah, I think we're good, yeah.
Appreciate you all's support.
We are moving.
Yes, absolutely, yes, ma'am, that is correct. And, and that was our goal here, to make sure that folks knew that this is still high priority.
I'd just like to say thank you for making this a public document.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions about this probably more than any other thing. Where, where are we, what's happening, how come we have a hernia thing, you made the vote in December, it's now August, what's going on? So, go to the website and there it is.
Yes, ma'am.
Like it.
Eggs and food line, I've got that question.
Yeah. Cannot be escaped.
And then on to, I think that's the only report this evening, and so on to recommendations. The first one is a supplemental appropriation to the tune of approximately eighty-seven, eighty-nine thousand, eighty-seven thousand? Is that right? Eighty-five, I knew there was a seven, eighty-five thousand, this is for an increase in revenue and expenses, and this comes for, from our food services department for the school breakfast program.
Move to improve supplemental appropriations for our school breakfast program.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Four yes votes, no no votes, motion carries?
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. Also, this evening, we have some technology items that Mr. Bennett has put together that are either broken or have reached the end of their service life. And we would like to document these and have them listed as surplus, so that we can move them out, recover some, whatever money we can, and move on with newer and better technology, correct, Brandon?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, four yes votes, no no votes?
Thanks for doing that stuff, Brandon.
Well done, Brandon, thank you, madam chair, members of the board. And finally, I'd like to invite Mr. Rutter to come forward. We have a, an additional surplus recommendation we'd like to make, and Mr. Rutter has some analysis as to why we would like to do this. Marshall?
Thank you, Dr. Hornick, madam chair, members of the board. Before, I come before you this evening to request permission to surplus a piece of equipment that we've had for approximately six years, that we have not been utilizing due to its finicky nature. It is a front-mounted Kubota diesel tractor that is a model that has the diesel particulate filter. And because of its unique nature and, and the operation and keeping it running, like most of the new diesels with today's E, to meet EPA regulations, we would like to trade that in and get some credit and, and get ready to procure a different attachment for our new skid steer, a forestry head specifically. And they were offering to give us a $10,000 credit for this tractor. And the, the mulching head, or the forestry machine, a lot of people know it as, is $27,000. And so within my department, we'll find a way to make up the money to, to get this attachment that we feel that can be better used and increase our capacity within our department, instead of using outside sources for contracting tree cleanup and bush hogging, and mainly our retention ponds as well. We have to contract those right now.
That's what you want the mulching head for?
Yeah. Yeah.
Move to approve as presented?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Four yes votes, no no votes?
Thanks for taking a look at the stuff you don't use. Don't let it sit there, because if it's not getting used, it's just losing money. So I appreciate you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Marshall, thank you, madam chair, members of the board.
Moving on to board member comments or future items, any additional items that we need to bring up? I have one, the next meeting, August twenty-fifth.
Yes, ma'am.
I will be out of the country, so I'm either requesting we add this, the work session into the following meeting, or I will not be here, one or the other.
The next meeting would be, just for the board's edification, the eighth of September, due to the first being Labor Day. And we have no, the administration is fine if the board would like to go that route, it will not put us behind.
I would say go ahead and combine it, and then leave it up to Dr. Hornick. If something else comes up during that time, then we would move for a special call meeting.
That's okay, alright.
So September eighth, we will do that, it will be, it will be the five thirty, it will, even though we're gonna combine the two, it'll be a 5:30, closed session starts, 6:30, open session start. And we'll have items as well as public comment and any other, which would be traditionally a work session item to bring forward, we will do that that evening.
Appreciate that, thank you. Anything else? Yes, Ms. Harrington?
I would just like to say I was not here on the July 14th meeting, but I was able to review some of the presentations that were provided. And I am just really thrilled at this strategic plan update that was provided by all members of the staff, and wanted to let you know that absolutely going in the right direction regarding what I would love to see as our progress growing forward. So thank you so much for the work you've done for three years now to get us to this point, under Dr. Hornick's supervision and leadership. And it was really cool to, to get that and go, oh, that's what I wanted to know, so I wanted to thank you. I also, even though she's not here, I think it was Mrs. Brookings that provided the AI, great presentation, thrilled to approve the policy this evening, and I guess the last thing I would like to say is, who does the board need to talk to about getting bigger laptops? I can't see this stuff, it's just too small, so let's keep that in mind, please. I think I heard someone else say that.
You have the visually impaired up here.
Yeah, there, I mean, multiple impairments, but that's one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Hornick, for the convocation, that was
Yes, ma'am.
stupendous.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Good?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Ricken? You sure? Alright. All right? All right, well, Jern, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.